Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington Joint Study Session with our fantastic Arts Commission. Creatologists like that in compliance of state laws, city council, special and regular meetings will be held in a high group format with in-person telephonic virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll just have everybody introduce themselves and go around the table and start with Joe.
Joe Smolow, City Council.
Jennifer Harter-Hallison, City Council.
Andrea Eckert, Arts Commission.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Joe Wagner, your mayor.
Sean Smith, City Council.
Kristi Hensel, City Council.
Liz Hallberg, Arts Committee.
Debbie Hertzach, City Council.
Katie Ludeman, Arts Commissioner.
Jonathan Sida, Parks Project Manager.
Reagan Bulley, City Manager.
Great. Well, thank you all for being here today. I will turn this, we have a looks like a very busy agenda and looking forward to it. I get excited when we get to meet the Arts Commission. So do you.
Thank you everyone for joining us at our 2025 Council Session. Very good to see all your faces again. Nice to see you guys last year and happy we're here yet again to share what we've done throughout this year. So, let's get started. First slide, I think, do we have a?
Is that still over here?
It is set up as a PDF.
Alright, so as we've gone over, my name is Paloma. I am Chair of the Arts Commission. We are unfortunately missing our Vice Chair. Megan McBride could not be with us this evening, but her presence is still felt. Ms. Katie Ludeman is our lovely secretary and Liz, Andrea, and Robin are wonderful team members who are able to make this all happen. Of course Jonathan as well, honorary Arts Commissioner. Always, always, often again, right? So, quick overview of our agenda, we're going to be going over our 2025 engagement first, including our Makers Markets. Spring and fall will both be included and Covington Days Kids Fest as well as the Quilting Show, which is our first presentation for this year, as well as other Art Commission volunteering opportunities that we've had. Following, we will have 2025 projects, both active and completed. For now, we have to present for you guys the utility vinyl wraps and the Karma Collective Coalition, as we still have it placed right now. And to finish off, we will have our 2026 projects, including ground murals, yarn art, rotating art calls, and future vinyl art wrap calls. Alright, so to start off, we have our Makers Market. For spring 2025, we had lovely engagement. We had lots of, I'm noticing a lot of repeat families, a lot of repeat children, a lot of repeat parents come that remember past projects, past ways to be involved, that their kids are actively still asking questions from previous years. I'm noticing a lot of return engagement, which I really love, shows that we're doing something right, right? We had a wonderful coloring contest this year, which I have provided some lovely examples for you all. These are projects that, projects that were initiated by Robin, who were shared to our community, including karma as an artist, karma doing fall activities, karma doing spring activities. And the children of all ages, all participants could join, create their ideas, and then submit them with their names and numbers in return for us to then select a winner and then get a prize. This is something that I notice in the community really participates in. They really, really like the idea of friendly competition, friendly artistic ideas being initiated by the kids. I'm noticing that a lot of parents notice that their kids start getting into their creative in tune with our booth participation. So I really loving our Makers Market activities. Um, yeah, that's all I have to say for that. For Covington Days, uh, excuse me, for Covington Days this year, we brought back our chalk artist Naomi Dubin. And same exact reception from last year, we had a lot of the children and a lot of the families come back to our booth asking and almost expecting for the chalk project to be there, which I, I really loved. We also had additional postage karma, the chameleon coloring. It wasn't a competition, it was just creativity, creation stations, as we like to call it. We also had a QR code, a bullet point post-it board for our Karma Collective idea that we are currently trying to really spread out to the community. We are still trying to get the overall numbers from how many QR scans we had. But I'm, from what I saw, it was, it was a pretty, pretty good amount. So, love to see that always. And for Kids Fest, we were able to have an art bus at our booth for the first time this year. That was a very wonderful addition. Lots of families, lots of children love that participation. We got to have lots of activities come in and out, both outside the table and inside the bus. It was a very good opportunity to showcase that there's other artistic projects, that there is accessibility, that we are a city that is focusing on bringing accessibility to all of our citizens, just because you are not able to perhaps access art in a public sense, maybe the art cannot not come to you, right? So we have this at our disposal and it was a very good opportunity to showcase our art accessibility for the city. So, this was one of our lovely volunteer moments that we got to participate in this year. The Covington Quilter Guild came and, which I'm hearing, was Jeff Wagner was a part of creating and I really respect the amount of dedication that these ladies have shown for the past thirty-five years. It was their thirty-fifth anniversary. Most of the quilters have been there since day one. They all know each other. I was, um, we were invited to connect with the Covington Quilter Guild to bring more visibility to their union, to their coalition. They did a annual Covington Show in Jenkins Creek Park with over a hundred quilts. It was fascinating. It was fascinating and I was told to pick the top three. So, it was tough, but it was such an admirable way to see the community's involvement. It was such a wonderful chance to meet different people, to meet their art skills. And as you can see, I am posing with the second place on the left and the third place up on top. And then Liz, if you would like to comment on page to start.
Yes, I was able to volunteer for, with Parks and Recreation and Kent High School for their auditorium, but Page to Stage Creations is an amazing, also volunteer opportunity that anyone that wants to get into theater would benefit from any of their classes or whatever, but just, uh, they've reached out to us. I know they've done some practicing in the community and I'd like the community to what is the word I'm looking for? Support them more and to where we can have these productions, but The Christmas Story or Christmas Past were phenomenal. I was thinking junior high, high school kind of level. No, this was very, it knocked my socks off. It was great. And so, just, yeah, between the quilters, there's, I guess ballet is also coming, dance, there's so many forms of art that we can all support and bring out through our websites or, you know, see at Covington and all, but the blogs or whatever to get more participation or involvement. So we're all more connected.
And then I'll add for the third part of this, I was able to judge for the one Kent School District Art Contest, that's their like pilot art contest that they came out with last year. And so Faith Cicely from the Kent School District had reached out to us and was just sharing their plan and and I think it's great to build connections with our neighbors, fellow artists, just to kind of just do what we can to promote art. So there are over four hundred artworks done and submitted, fantastic work. So I was able to judge. The theme was that they needed to submit artwork that was a visual representation of unity, collaboration, and like a shared identity in our area. It was really great to see. So down the road, I think we'll just have further communication with school district and just kind of see where this goes and kind of coordinate our own art contests as well, just kind of make sure we're not like timing it at the same time. So I think keeping that communication is key. Great.
Thank you, Liz. So, moving on to our 2025 projects, both our completed utility wraps and an update on Karma Collective. So for our completed utility wraps, we are recapping on phase four. We have proudly installed six new utility wraps this year. Although we had a three-month delay caused by weather, we were able to move forward and install some of the beautiful boxes that have been around town, such as the ones in Founder's Park, such as the ones in, next to Red Canoe by Covington Church. And we are really, really excited. I got a lot, we got a lot of positive feedback on these boxes. The community, these, these came at a really good time in the year, in the weather, in people's lives. They were very noticed. I noticed that they were very noticed. I got lots of feedback on them and I was very happy to hear that. Because some, some phases get more noticed than others and this one was one that I noticed really brought up people's attention to the Art Commission, which is always a fantastic opportunity. Alright, so for our Karma Collective, our project is currently in its final design phase. Love that. The city staff is in process of drafting policy because we are currently trying to come up with a different name, a different title. We are trying to revamp the Karma Collective and take it to a new direction. Just title, so that takes a little bit of time regarding steps, but design-wise, these are currently our final phases and manufacturing should begin next month. If everything goes well, it should begin next month. And I can't believe that I'm able to say this because I remember last year barely pitching this and talking about this in two years and it's, it's been a while going. So I'm, I'm very happy to see that we are now in the phase of production, almost starting to see this now come to light.
I got a little update. The policy's on council's agendas tonight.
There you go. You guys already knew that, but there you go. Now we know that we are all.
I don't know, we've got push.
Alright, so our 2026 projects, which include our ground murals, yarn art, rotating art calls, and our utility, our utility vinyl wraps. The picture on the upper left is the first place ribbon that the Quilters Guild made for us to place on the quilts. I thought it was a very lovely, it's a very lovely token of their appreciation for them to make their own ribbon for us to present out of their quilting materials. And I really appreciated that. The picture on the upper right is one of our many, many participants in, I, I believe this was Spring Makers Market. Children and families, we always are blessed to have lots of engagement, lots of interaction, lots of questions, lots of community wanting to come and make art with us almost every event. And then the bottom picture is one of our lovely visitors that we had. We had a high school student from Kentwood come as part of her politics, civil, civil class, history class. She came and she observed, made a couple notes. She took a picture with us. She came and observed our entire meeting. She did a wonderful job and this was, I believe, a couple months ago. So, love to see all of our fresh faces up there.
Alright. Cool. Alright, so I'm going to talk a little bit about ground murals. For those of you who like to read documents, but have documents. So, um, so as you recall, I think last year we had talked about doing a crosswalk mural that was going to be a bit complex to make happen. So we're putting a little right turn, a little pivot, and we're going to do ground mural. That's the goal. And the plan for this would be to do it in some of these spiffy new parks that we have created for our town. And it would allow us to bring some really beautiful art. These of course are just examples now in Covington, but they could be soon. So that we can have people be very engaged in the space and just bring a lot of, of life to our beautiful new spaces. We have talked about a little bit within the Arts Commission. I'm not going to bore with all the details of this. This is just kind of an example proposal of the types of things that we're going through and what we would expect to, to see as this project progresses. But the goal ultimately right now is that we're thinking that we would go to Jenkins Creek Park as kind of our phase one. Just because it's so recent, it still has some really nice open spaces that are just asking for some color. And that's really the goal, but we just started this. So we are very much in our early phases. And then we'll kind of move forward from, from there as time allows and as the rest of our projects allow. If you have questions, you're welcome to ask, but otherwise that's probably all I will cover on murals.
Are they permanent?
So they would be permanent, similar to the skate park that we have.
Perfect.
And that's the goal. Of course, you know, we live in a lovely wet place that requires turnover when it comes to things like that, but the goal would be permanency.
Great. So just annual maintenance? Anything with yarn, I love so.
So, yarn bombing. I have this idea for a few years now that I'm really excited that we finally get to talk about, present to you guys, but yarn bombing Covington. It's, you know, a temporary form of street art, wrap, temporary or everyday objects with crocheted or knitted pieces. It would, I have a package, I couldn't print them out today, but there are many cities that have done it. So there's all kinds of guides to go off of to create this in the city. But essentially, it would be a community project where we would get volunteers, knitting circles, businesses, and, I don't know, churches, schools, anybody really that wants to participate would donate their knitted pieces according to the artist, the fiber artist that creates the design. But that was my idea too. It would just really engage the whole community other than just kind of being able to go see something would be helping with creating. I have some notes on, like it brings together knitters, crocheters, artists, volunteers, connects the youth families and seniors. It builds pride in our community's sense of ownership. It adds vibrant colors to creative spaces, encourages photo opportunities, social media sharing. It increases the traffic for nearby shops and markets and cafes and all kinds of businesses that would, if they had them in the downtown area, it would create the traffic there or in a park. I was thinking Covington Community Park would be a great spot for it, but I think really anywhere, trees. Those big cement circles in the Covington Community Park, I had thought those would be perfect to yarn bomb.
These ledges right here for the city hall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Large, blank walls, buildings.
You put, yeah, I had, was gonna put a picture.
Until you see the picture on page three.
How long do they stay up?
Oh, that was another thing was, it is a temporary installation. So three months, I was thinking like over the summer and then you would take it down and volunteers would, would take the swatches and turn them into hats or blankets and don't need them to shelter us other places.
Are we gonna call it yarn bombing?
I think that's the only term I've heard of, but maybe call it whatever.
Because I totally see somebody going, that looks cool. I'm gonna go yarn, yarn bomb this.
Oh.
It's not the worst thing.
Yeah, it's kind of a form of guerrilla art.
Yeah.
You know, I saw.
People like yarn bomb people's yard.
Yeah, yeah, well, you gotta create the piece and then wrap it and then sit there and stitch it together.
I was gonna ask how it got.
Yeah, you would create the pieces at any time. I saw somebody yarn bombed the Jimi Hendrix statue in Capitol Hill. Oh, that was twenty years ago. I thought that was fun.
Yeah, I've seen the trees in Seattle Center, the street posts.
Statues, yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's all kinds of ways that you can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, how can you be in a bad mood?
Right?
Okay. Have all the thermos out, we can put those sweaters on them.
Yeah.
Beanies and such.
Sweater vests.
Yeah.
That's all I had, yep. That's, that's our yarn bombing.
I like, I like this.
And then for our rotating art calls, our goals as always standardized, weather-resistant metal or other weather resistant, yeah, artworks and artistic labels for city public art platforms such as the new platforms at JCP, the new platforms at Covington Park. Different opportunities, rotating art calls, decorating and installing city creatures karma statues as well at JCP's open platforms. We are very, very excited for that. Yeah, so our rotating art calls are just a great opportunity for us to launch accessibility, inclusivity. We always try to take in different people's artistic abilities. We always try to take in different people's artistic exposure. Some artists don't receive as much exposure as others and we like to try to give all of our citizens the equal appropriate amount of time that they all deserve. Because they all bring wonderful things to our community. We should highlight those. So for our next utility vinyl wraps, we are starting in phase five. Incredible. Twenty twenty-six, we are starting to issue new Artist Call Wraps with the remaining city traffic signal boxes. And we are also investigating alternate non-traffic signal utility box opportunities in Covington. That is one thing that I have heard a lot, a lot of feedback. We have more boxes than just the utility ones. Why don't we do other stuff with those? Why don't you try to see if you can do stuff with those? I know that a lot of boxes are washed out. Those are XL. Don't even worry about the right one. So, yes, we are looking into those and we will be starting those at our next meeting as soon as possible. So that is pretty much all that we have on our presentation. Thank you as always for being a wonderful audience and for giving us the opportunity to showcase what we do throughout the year. You guys are always very supportive of our ideas. And not every city is as receptive of their artistic community as you guys are. And I really appreciate that because us coming together can only do so much without us all working together. So we really appreciate it and let's continue to make it happen. Make Covington beautiful, make Covington accessible, make the art as impactful as it can be. So if that would be all from everybody else, can we get started with questions?
I just want to say first, I love the creativity that the Arts Commission always brings to us. And you never cease to amaze me with what you bring. I mean, yarn bombing, I mean that, and now the Covington Quilters Guild and I don't want to speak for my oldest, but I'm sure she would be doing some of the yarn bombing as well. She just crocheted a crib, the size of a crib blanket. So, but yeah, this is outstanding. So, does anyone?
Thank you. First of all, yes, thank you for not thinking small and thinking big and it's not often that every, you know, every city has big thinkers and there's so much beauty on this earth. So much beauty on this earth and though beauty lies in the eye of the beholder, we need more beholders, right? Um, so thank you for that. My question is, do we have any businesses that have solidified, you know, the purchase of a karma? Do we have any in, in the queues? What, what does that look like right now?
So we can talk a little bit more about that, but CEDIS has not started the lease program yet because we don't have a design to show businesses what it will look like. We're in second design phase right now with the fabricating company. So, but we hopefully will have that like Paloma mentioned in October and so CEDIS will start going out. But we do have, I think, three at this point that have already said they want statues.
Yes.
Alright, thank you for that. That's exciting. How much are they?
Uh, still figuring that out. The, the statue itself will be about just, was it twenty-eight hundred, Jonathan? Something like that and then install. So we just want the lease payment to cover the cost for the statue to install. And then of course, they'll need to paint it.
Is there a reason behind wanting to change the name from Karma Collective? I mean, none of those.
I, I can address that if, if you want. I don't know that it's too big of a deal. Internally, we can call it whatever we want. It doesn't matter. But for the sales pitch, I think we're gonna call it Bring Karma to Your Corner. And so I think that's probably what you're addressing.
Mentioned it because I wanted it to be a detail that was brought forth in case it was brought forth to you guys later, just so you guys know that we are already aware.
I, I put together a little sales pitch that I shared with, with CEDIS and I renamed it in that. So not, not, not a big deal.
Yeah.
I think that'll sell better. Yeah, I mean, nothing wrong with Karma Collective, but I mean.
Yeah.
It's the first phase, first phase of it. Yeah. Yeah.
Covington potatoes.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Anybody else? I'm excited to see what.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to add also that I'm just amazed at the creativity and ideas that you all think, think about and then you bring together. You have, you appear to have very shared unified desire to decorate and help our community thrive. So I, I appreciate that. And and then you haven't run out of ideas because you've got more to go for next year. So those will be the new ideas.
The interaction with the children and community at our booths, whether it's just a coloring contest or whatever we're doing is just the energy, it's multi-generational. We make these amazing connections that are not just here in Covington, but Maple Valley and Bonnie Lake. And I, and they want to come back and do it again. So I'm proud to serve.
I'm working on the commission and, yeah.
So thank you for opportunity.
I will add on to one thing that Liz was saying, that well, and I have discussed several times of these Makers Markets and all of our other meetings out in the world. There are a lot of families, a lot of kids who do not have art supplies at home. And so us being able to give out art supplies for free at these events is.
Um, and so us being able to give out art supplies for free at these events is extremely meaningful to them, also to us, of course. Um, but it's really nice to see how excited they are to take home their very own crayons, colored pencils, whatever the case may be. Um, because that's the first time they've had their own. It's really exciting.
Unfortunately, art, even in education, even in um. The world is often seen as a backlash. It is often used as an elective. When it is a human necessity, we need art, we need artistic expression in this world, especially in times like right now. And having this opportunity, I grew up being able to ask for markers and colored pencils and crayons and stickers at my disposable. Many people don't. Many children unfortunately do not. And these are things that I had never thought about until joining the commission and seeing the necessity. And realizing the fact that some parents have to choose between feeding their kids or buying them. Art supplies, which may not be a complete necessity at the moment, but it can bring joy and peace to a family, which. Like Robin said, we appreciate very much. So that's a very good note to add. Thank you guys. Yeah.
Well, just thinking, when we see the little community uh. When uh, library boxes out there, I just wonder.
Relive, that's a good idea.
Yes, I love that. Yeah.
Little libraries.
I can see what I can write here out, but by. Any mom that's has, you know, well, that has. Elementary school students that keep graduating and this year it's, you know, the twenty four. Crayons and next year is forty eight, so you can't use, you know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The necessities. Can, can I make one suggestion about Bakers Market? And I don't know, that's really.
Tell us.
If I compare locations, and, and this is just my. Um, but if I compare locations as to like where, when it's in real life, it's a little bit more spread out. And when it's at the new town hall, while it's incredibly successful and I like the intimacy of it. We do have the space. And there's something grandiose about. About just spreading things out. Um, if it's a need, then I understand, but if. It's a, uh, but if we can, I just think there. Even just walking, like the, the extra walking, sorry. There at, at real life, for example, if you, you get to walk all around and it seems like an adventure, like there's a whole thing. I love the new location. If we can use more of the space. I just think it would make it feel. Bigger. It's big enough. I know we have way more vendors now than ever. Um, I'd just like to see that. Showcase part, just a little more space.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and yeah. And again, it's just.
They can use a whole lot and I think it was used up actually with park, with the parking reserve.
So I used to do craft fairs.
Yeah.
And run all those and.
I love it either way.
Spreading it out, you know, having space in between versus putting them next to each other. I mean, of course, this was. A while ago. Vendors preferred to be right next to each other because it helped them sell. So like if they're buying here, then the next person, it just. It just kind of builds on it. But I'm not, I mean, I'll pass that on to Dana. So I'll see her on Thursday.
Maybe, maybe next to each other, but just a little, cause, cause if I'm looking at this side, I'm not looking at that side. So there can be a space between the perhaps, I just something, it's a feel. Yeah, it's a, it's just that. Feel.
I'll pass it on.
Um, along that same vein, I know that this year they were concerned with space. And the vendors had to park behind the canopy and as Rotarians, we were doing the parking. It felt like by midday, there was enough space, like you said, like especially where your, your booth was. You know, they, they probably could have set it up, but I think we didn't really know. Yeah, I don't think they really, you know, they wanted to play it safe. And some people were even parking like across the street at the park. And now as there's more opportunity for others on street parking, it might. Lend itself to. A different configuration.
Yeah, when I showed up, there were people still parking across, but, but then there was just massive amounts of space. Yeah, maybe they didn't know anybody, you know, if you see someone parking, you'll probably follow them or something.
I think earlier in the day, the parking stayed pretty full.
It, it did, it did for until about noon. And then I think people last year, because there wasn't as much parking. I think they just assumed there wouldn't be in parked other places.
Again, just.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, have we had a better commission that shows up in Covington swag?
No, no, I'm serious. Because you always have to have and. So at an AWC. Meeting we had. God, this was, I've been on it a long time. Um. And this is meant as positive. You always need one crazy person. And what I mean crazy, no. Crazy is not crazy up here. It's somebody that thinks out and is different and unique. That's right. Which is what I said, the creatologists. So that's, you did that on purpose.
I'm like everywhere. I'm still there too.
She's with us now.
Well, yeah, everywhere.
See, you've each got that and you've all the ideas that. Every year it just gets more and more exciting and more and every. Thank you very much. And I saw you on Saturday, Andres.
Ran to him at the grocery store.
You tried to prep me for it and I'm just going like, no, it's beyond. I do have one other question for. So this ground mural project, I see budget estimate, is this coming as a budget? Proposal this year in our budget or not? Okay.
To give you an idea of what we're up to so that you can see in the future.
Alright. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you each very much for all that you do. Um, it's always awesome to get together and to see the great out creativity from the creatologists. I'd love that. Where can you get that? I've not seen it before, so. Alright, well, thank you all very much and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.